Okay, we'll get started then. We'll start off with council meeting follow-up. Mr. City Manager.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. I don't think I have any.
Okay. Anybody else got any? Okay. All right, then we'll move on to 21st Missouri to Kingsbury speed data. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. Um, uh, many of you are aware of several citizens who have brought to your attention the possibility of, um, a, a speed problem on 21st in the Kingsbury area. And I'd say even primarily from between Beverly and Wyoming Boulevard, that whole corridor. Um, the, uh, the police department and Andrew's team, um, have done some investigation with regard to this concern and have collected speed data and traffic data generally and accident data and so forth. And, um, uh, have an analysis for you to consider. Uh, to get to right to the punchline, and then I'll defer to Andrew and, and Cap Chaney. Um, we, we, we don't think any changes are necessitated, given the data that we have collected. However, uh, if you see it different, tonight would be the night to help us through that and give us whatever direction you think makes the most sense. And so with that, Mr. Mayor, if I could defer to whomever would like to go first, Shane or Andrew. Uh, who would like to tackle it?
I think the memo speaks for itself, but I don't know what all of you all would like to ask any questions, so. Fire away.
Why don't you give a synopsis of what the data indicates and then we'll, uh, go from there.
All right, so most of the traffic stuff is done off the 85th percentile. I mean, most of the, they take it off the volume of cars that go through there. Right now, the speed for eastbound traffic in that corridor is 39 miles an hour up the 85th percentile. And going, uh, westbound would be 40 miles an hour. And there's moderate traffic volumes with an average of 700 cars per day. Well, the speeds are higher than desired. They are not abnormal with the street, with the intersection streets. Have anybody been through that little corridor there from Kingsbury down to Missouri? There's really just had that apartment complex there, so there's not a whole lot of cross-traffic. And then statute kind of limits the speed restrictions in residential areas with that. Here recently, and it's not your package, because I just gathered this data today. So anecdotally, um, we did another analysis Thursday, July 1st through Thursday, July 8th. Posted speed limit is 30, enforcement tolerance, five miles an hour. Everybody understand what that five mile, mile an hour is, so it's kind of give or take, plus or minus. The percentage above the limit was 3.5% above the average, or above the posted speed limit. So the enforcement rating is low at that time frame, which is as recent as last week. And then overall, we've only had 18 traffic crashes in that area over the last five years. From 2019 to current, we've had, within that corridor, we've done 114 traffic stops. I don't have the data on what those are, some are speeding, some are stop signs. Some could be collision-related on those 18 traffic crashes, but that's for, when we actually set out and say, "Okay, let's do a traffic enforcement operation," I'm not really, there's not a whole lot going on there for that means. Questions, answers?
Anybody have any questions? Think so? All right. Do you have anything you want to add?
I'm not sure I can add much else, other than, you know, when we look at traffic accidents, we don't get overly concerned until we start seeing five or more per year at an intersection. So the number of accidents doesn't create any concerns for us either. I mean, so the speed's a little higher, but, um, other than that, there's not much going on.
I guess, is it fair to say that when, uh, when you look at that stretch itself, the only thing you have is the apartment complex there, a lot of open space on both sides? Isn't it natural that people going through those areas are probably going to tend to go a little bit quicker than they would if it was built out?
Mayor, council, you're right. It's a nice wide corridor. We did re-stripe it to a single lane in each direction with bike lanes and hope that that would also give them a restricted feeling and slow traffic down. I don't know if we saw that at all, um, because we got that speed data after that restructuring was done. So the, the speeds are higher than we would hope, but it is wide and open. There is absolutely zero development on the south side of that street.
And there's only, to add to that, Mayor Council, there's only been one reported injury crash. Most of them are rear, you know, people not paying attention to distracted drivers, but there's only been one reported injury crash where someone was injured, but it was a minor injury.
And that's in the five-year timeframe, okay? Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else with anything?
I guess about the only thing I could say would be too, and I'm not advocating necessarily to do it, but if we really wanted to try to bring that down more like the 35 mile an hour, so to speak, would start more randomly doing traffic stops out there, isn't it? To, basically our only option, isn't that a reasonable assessment?
Sure, but even, Mayor Council, that, um, that only has a minimal impact. You go there, you enforce the traffic, and then eventually you gotta come out there and then, you know, behaviors go back. So it's really educating the public at large. You might be able to do some other modifications to the roadway in there, but I don't recommend that. Distractor behavior, it would boil down to people being in a hurry, not leaving in enough time. Distracted drivers, some people just not paying attention to what they're doing, and before you know it, they're doing 40 miles an hour.
Yeah, and on that nice street, it's easy to do in the new vehicles these days. Thank you.
Okay, if we don't have anything else, we'll move on to GIS demo. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I, I'm not sure how many of you have had the opportunity to go through and see what it is we have available to the public and to all of you with regard to tools through our GIS function. Um, but indeed, I think if, if you have the opportunity to check out some of those tools and portals and whatnot, you'd be pretty impressed with regard to the amount of services that are available and information you can access and so on. Uh, so we thought it'd be helpful for you as members of the council and representatives of your public to understand what is out there, available to you and so forth, that, um, you know, may aid in your decision-making or in your communications with your constituents and so on. And so we've asked, uh, Michael's team and Denise to come visit with you tonight so that indeed, uh, you can get that familiarity and ask any questions. And even if you have other directives you'd like to see take place here, uh, we'd certainly be open to that as well. So with that, Mr. Mayor, if I could defer to our, our team, that would be, uh, that'd be great.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess just real briefly before Denise Cook jumps into the demo for you guys, uh, just to give you a little bit of background, we've had GIS at the city of Casper for coming up on 30 years now. And, uh, it's seen a lot of evolutions over, over that time. About nine years ago, 10 years ago, we decided that it made sense to enter into an agreement with the other, with the county and with the towns of Mills, Evansville, and Barnum to create this regional, regional group, because the county had its own setup, Casper had its own setup. Uh, the towns really didn't have much of anything in terms of GIS, and, uh, it was, it was needed for all of us. So, and we also needed to share data with one another. So that's, we, the city and the county worked together and entered into a partnership nine years ago. And one of the first things that we did was hired Ms. Wiskow as the regional GIS administrator to, to oversee that operation. We had a fairly robust GIS at that time, but it has just grown exponentially under her leadership and, uh, has benefited both, all, all of those agencies combined. The, uh, the GIS system, which we're going to show you a demo of basically the portal that is online for, for the public, while we also have restrictive use for, for staff and such. But the database itself and the system itself also serves as a backend for a number of our systems, notably the Spillman Public Safety software and the addressing for it, uh, community development, it serves, services for our water department and such. So it's, it's used organization-wide, not only for us, but as I said, for, for those other organizations too. So it, I'll, I'll, I'll leave it at that and just wanted to give you guys a real high-level overview of how robust and how important of a system it is organizationally. I'll let Denise provide you that demo.
All right. Well, I know some of you are familiar with GIS because I've worked with you either at a staff level or on sitting on council or at certain committees. So if you haven't been to GeoSmart, this is our new 2.0 data portal. We recently refreshed it from what I'm going to term our classic version. Uh, this new version essentially is going to give us more time in order to stay updated with the coding needed to support the type of functionality and mapping functionalities that we want to carry forward through the future. Um, if you haven't been on the site, I'm not going to go through each one of the web maps, but this really is a culmination of what Michael just discussed. We bring in data not just from the city, but this is a culmination of information that comes in on a weekly basis from the city, the towns, um, and also some of the other agencies that fall without, that fall within the Trenna counties, such as, uh, the health department and, uh, weed and pest and what have you. So information you see here, public-facing, uh, you can find everything from, and this is probably one of our, our most trafficked views, is the property and ownership. We receive quite a bit of information and inquiry from everyone, from assessor to land survey to petroleum and energy development. And they really utilize this as one of our, our major portals. Uh, on average, we're seeing between, on a daily basis, 700 to 1,000 visitors a day, uh, just on one web map in general. That's not to count all the other ones that are also being served out. Uh, we know that it's growing in popularity, because when something's not functional, we receive phone calls. That's always a good sign that you're getting the word out. But it has been really a kind of a cultivated organic growth to get the information out there. It's really tried to achieve one of the, the goals, I think, the city and then all of the agencies and municipalities here of being an open government, open data where it can be shared in a safe and secure manner. So this is really that umbrella in which we're trying to push forward data to the public. Uh, some of the really interesting data, and because spatial data is becoming so much more integrated with other applications and other systems, what you'll also see is that we're able to pull in information from not just our local agencies, but we're beginning to pull in things from our state and federal partners as well. So this is a really good example of just our travel and transportation view that not only has our closures as street closures, but it also has, as you can see, we have that weather line that's moving in that we're streaming in from NOAA. And then we're also pulling in data from YDOT. So you're seeing all the additional I-25 YDOT information that we're pulling in. And this is, uh, information that from a cooperative where we've been able to pull and extract in from YDOT. But, uh, like I had also mentioned, we're starting to see more and more agencies put out what we call geo-sensitive or geo-enabled services, so we can begin, you know, to pull in things. Uh, so if you are traveling through the area and you see, oh, wow, we have construction on I-25 and also a large, uh, you know, storm cell coming through, maybe I should get off the road and take a break, you know? Things along those lines. But what we've really been trying to enable through this open data concept, how can we enable the public to better support themselves and also as a decision support mechanism? So one of the, uh, one of the main views, we also get a lot of questions about, are our FEMA floodplain data. Um, we're streaming in data from FEMA, so you'll see that it does sometimes take a little bit of time in order for it to load, because it's not coming in from our servers. But as you see here, if you're a property owner, let's say that you're looking at a particular location or a house and you want to see, hey, do I need to purchase flood insurance? You can simply type in your address, and I don't have a keyboard in front of me, or I type in an address. And you can zoom in to say, oh, yeah, definitely, I'm within the EE maybe, and so perhaps I should look at, um, the flood insurance program if I'm going to purchase within this area. So... This has really been the conduit in which we've been trying to push information out to the public. It's, it's everything that you can imagine that the city or the local governments would maintain. And the diversity is really quite interesting. We have everything from cemetery data, so if you want to look up historical genealogy information or maybe relatives or what have you, if that information is available. Uh, we also want to provide, because a lot of individuals do have the ability to work with the data locally, but also if we have engineering and survey firms or other types of developers or vendors, that if we want to alleviate some of the workload on our staff in regards to data requests, we can begin to push some of this information for them to obtain through this portal. So something really simple, um, property and ownership data, that's a very requested piece of information on a, on a daily basis. You as a user, you as the public, or you as someone that might be staff for an engineering survey or developer, you could go into our particulars portal, download the data, and you could download it in an Excel compatible format. Or if you do have access to other types of software like CAD or GIS, you can download them in that compatible format. There's a, really a lot of variability in the way in which you can interact with the data, just even in the tabular view. So... Does anyone have any questions? I don't want to go through every single item within here, because we'll be here all day, and I know that everybody probably wants to go home for the evening. But, um, in addition to the ability to access data, to interact with data, we're also trying to put out other types of highlights of programs. Um, one of them being the Casper Fire Department. Jennifer over at Casper Fire has been working on this senior safety program for quite some time, so she updates the story map, uh, pretty frequently. We're also working with the Trenna County Emergency Management, who's working on a preparedness plan for what we anticipate being an active fire season. So we're working with emergency management to have what is called some, a story map, which will follow a format very similar to what Jennifer's put together for Casper Fire and just give information, especially for, um, citizens that are on the mountain of proper preparedness that needs to, in order to stay safe this summer. Okay? Any questions? Any interests? Anything that someone would like to focus on a little bit? Close, more closely or in further detail?
Can you pull the screen back up so I can see if anybody else is?
Yep.
I had a question, Mayor, if that's right.
Okay, Kyle, go ahead.
Um, I love the information, the access to it, that's awesome. Love the direction that we're going with all of this. As I'm sitting here trying to, um, check out, you know, um, for instance, maybe the parks and trails or was just playing around in garbage collection recycling depots, it is a little hard for me to navigate, and so I'm just wondering, is that something that, um... Is there any way we can make it easier for people to use these, whether it's short videos or some sort of tutorial or something? Because I consider myself a pretty savvy dude online, and, um, again, I love the access, but it is a little difficult to navigate through some of these.
Sure, and we would love, if you can provide maybe some really good direction on how it's difficult for you to navigate, then I think that will give us some good direction on how we could develop those type of materials for the public. Because what, namely with these type of web app interfaces and web maps, it's really a point-and-click type of interaction. And what I typically like to communicate to most of the public, go through and just explore away. Um, when you see a particular window in which you want to maybe query information, simple address queries, you know, just type in, begin to type, and then it will begin to auto-fill once it begins to look, to find in the OK records. But you are absolutely correct. There are some tools and widgets, um, within the application that you can go through and just begin to explore. But if there is a way in which we can make that user experience more fluid, then I definitely welcome the feedback.
A follow-up question, if nobody else has one. So I, I guess, maybe, um, maybe I'm mistaken. So, I mean, we are talking about GIS data and stuff, so does that mean, uh, who's the audience for this? Is it the general public, or is it more, you know, people that are, you know, that are probably more familiar with these sorts of overlays and this kind of information? I guess, who, who is the, who's your primary audience, maybe? Uh, because maybe this is all right on track, and the people who this is for are very comfortable using this, and it's, you know?
You know, uh, GI, spatial data is really become more mainstream. So, and, and I, I will say it's mainly because of interfaces like, you know, your apps of Google and what have you that have a map-driven type of interface. And so I think that there's definitely an audience that it caters to. You know, if you look at certain, um, apps within here, corner records, that's going to be with the land survey community. So those particular, you know, surveyors are very familiar with spatial data and mapping. But there is still that, um, you know, citizen interface in which we can make it more fluid and easier for them to interact. Uh, we've gone through and we've performed multiple training sessions. And these training sessions have mainly been geared towards certain disciplines. Um, you know, realtors, title agents, people that deal with land record on a more frequent basis. But if there's a way in which perhaps we can design at the start of the page to maybe have a video display to go through and give some basics of how to interact with the web maps, I think that would be an excellent opportunity.
Thank you.
I can add something to what Kyle was asking. Um, this is Lisa Inger-Bretson.
Okay, go ahead, Lisa.
Kyle, as a realtor, we're in this program daily, if not multiple times a day. And so I love this website. It's helped us to be able to look at a property, be able to pull up to see if you've got any easement issues or any kind of encroachments on the plat maps and stuff. And then also you have the ability to kind of pull up some tax information, zoning, subdivisions, and things of that nature. Um, and then for flood insurance. And so honestly, I think if the citizens knew more about this, they could do some of their own due diligence on knowing what their taxes are and if they're in a flood plain, and then understanding a little bit more where their property lines are at. But I think the general public just doesn't know that this website exists and how handy it could be to just glean that information.
Thanks, Lisa.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, we really enjoy the feedback, especially whenever we can interact with our... We, we deal with the, you know, internal staff on a daily basis, but whenever we're able to obtain feedback from the public, that's very rewarding, but also informative for us. So, um, thank you.
There any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Michael?
Mayor, if I may, just two, two other points. Um, one, one of the other reasons that we wanted to provide this demo to you as well is, uh, we have a five-year flight that is performed, 2015, 2020, we'll have another one in 2025, that's funded through the NPO. And that, that actually provides aerial photography, uh, very precise aerial photography of the community. And I know that, uh, that has been an interest of council in the past. So just, just as a heads up, that's where some of this data is, is used. And then I, as I had referenced earlier, we have, it's, it's a regional effort. And as being a regional effort, it, the, the regional GIS Denise's position is funded not only by the city of Casper, but, uh, NPO and then the county and the, the towns as well.
Just a follow-up question to that. Is there any, uh, is there any plans in the future to statewide to, to go to this type of format? And, and I ask that because I've been, I use this just like Lisa daily, but, you know, you go to Converse County and you get on their GIS system, and, and it's there, and you can find what you need, but it's a little bit of a puzzle.
Right.
Quite a bit more difficult to use than what this is.
There's, um, there is a, a statewide working group that I serve on for the NextGen 911 initiative. And right now, we're in that assessment phase, making the determination of which counties actually need some assistance getting the programs kick-started. But you're absolutely correct. There are certain counties or municipalities that are still very much, um, in the development phase. They, they haven't really scratched the surface. There's also a, um, a, a company within Wyoming that maintains a lot of the assessor data and the addressing data for some of the counties that do not have a developed GIS infrastructure. But I think where the state's trying to make the determination is, are they going to be able to meet the standards needed for, like, with NextGen 911? So how do we come together, you know, at, at a statewide level and say, we have this information, we need to develop some standards? Because if we're going to, if it's going to be useful, then we need to essentially make sure that everyone has access to the same resources and tools. So, no, you're absolutely correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
And we all meet our standards.
Yeah. We want to define the standards.
Okay, do you have anything else?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, just to say that, uh, having worked around in various parts of the state over, over the years, th- this is definitely one of the most rigorous and abundant GIS portals that's out there. So I really appreciate all that work. It, it's wonderful. It's nice, it's a nice resource for our citizens to have. It really is, I appreciate it.
It is, and, you know, the staff, uh, through all the municipalities and the county, it's really become a grassroots effort and been a core data system that's developed on a daily basis. Um, this data that you see, not all of it is pushed to the public, because there is some that is security restricted. But data's updated every week. We have a Thursday, Friday audit cycle. If there's a new address that's maybe not in Google Maps or a new road that's not made it to Google Maps, it'll be there on Thursday or Friday, once the plat's recorded, so, yeah. We've had multiple delivery, um, services utilize our, our application because that addressing is so much more accurate or up-to-date.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything else on that?
No, sir.
Okay. And we will move on to scooters, ordinance, and contract discussions. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as you might imagine, the, the idea of bringing, uh, scooters to the community, unfortunately hasn't been a real easy question to address or accommodate. And so, uh, what you have here is, um, a compendium of work that the attorney's office has been engaged in, that the PD has been engaged in, and engineering and, and so on, that we think would accommodate this business idea if indeed you all like the, uh, the ordinance approach that this proposes as well as the agreement that the vendor is asking for in order to do business here in the community in, in this unique way. Uh, so with that, we, we do have ordinance ideas that we think will help accommodate this unique business and, uh, you know, interface with the public on a much safer basis than, than initially thought. And, uh, we think it's a pretty good work product. I'm not the expert, however, and I'd prefer to defer to, uh, those who have put a lot of work into this. And so if I could allow the, the attorney to kind of walk you through some of those nuances, feel free to ask questions and, and feel good about the formal discussion that is, is coming up here real soon, so that we can have this vendor have some summer months left to, to provide their product and service, if you will.
Mr. Allen?
Thank you, Mayor Council. Flora, if we could get page six of the ordinance up, please? Um, as, uh, City Manager was talking about, we try, we're trying to shift this moving quickly so that Bird Rides, who's the, uh, candidate that wanted us to, to take a look at this, wanted you to take a look at this, uh, so he would have some opportunity to bring this to Casper and we could see how, how it in fact goes over. Uh, we've got a couple of things going on. One is the ordinance that I think I'll talk about first, and then subsequent to that being contract. The ordinance, uh, we've tried to basically take some ordinances from around the country and meld them with our ordinance with respect to, uh, to usual vehicles, toy vehicles, bicycles and the like in the downtown area, because we anticipate that'll be a lot of the, uh, the demand that come from the downtown. Thinking, hopefully, there will be some tourism involved with this. And that, uh, we're also looking possibly at the Parkway. We have a call-in to, uh, the Parkway Plaza. They have a board meeting tomorrow. They really haven't weighed in on this, um, but we've had some communication back and forth on that. Uh, you remember that Mike Cavato, uh, spoke to you about three weeks ago now, four weeks, something like that. It's been a while. And, uh, so we've tried to incorporate a lot of the, the comments that he made to you and the recent discussions, our conversations back and forth with him. recent discussions, our conversations back and forth with him. The main thing, though, about this is just so you kind of understand the operation would be that this would be the downtown area. Basically, there's no variety of bicycles, any type of mechanism on the sidewalks in the downtown area. And that would be the entire area here. And what we're looking for, though, is that because we think that bicycles and e-scooters, rollerblades, that type of thing, is still being used in the downtown area, but you don't want them in this area, this hexagon that's been defined. And I appreciate the police department's work on that because of concerns about people diagonally parking, the roads being too narrow, things of that nature being too congested. So basically, the e-scooters would be able to utilize the outside around the hexagon. And inside the hexagon, that would be pretty much just a pedestrian-only, vehicle-only type of operation. You wouldn't have people out there without the protection of a car or the ability to have a little bit more protection from motorcycles and the like. There was a little bit of a duality when we started to look at this, when we talked with Mr. Cavato, when he talked with you a few weeks ago. He said Bird's position on it was that eighteen-year-old would be their targets for any of these scooters. When we looked at it and we looked at other ordinances around the country and thought, well, that's great for the dockless vehicles and for the Bird customers, but how about somebody who bought one here? You've got a driver's license, you can drive a vehicle. Why couldn't you drive your own scooter? So we actually have kind of a two-tier thing there. So we've defined dockless scooters as a subsection of e-scooters. So we have e-scooters and dockless scooters. And with respect to the dockless scooters, the age limit is a little bit higher, but we received an email from Mr. Cavato just before this meeting saying that maybe we can rethink about that, but I haven't talked with him. There are also been some additional things, that they would have to be geofenced. So remember, if they're going to be coming in from out of town, we could geofence this to make sure that if someone who's not familiar with the town or decided they're going to try to make a run for it through this section of Town McGrath, it's not appropriate to go through, it should get shut off. So the vehicle itself, by using the technology that's available, could do that. There's also the technology available, as Mr. Cavato says, that if there is an area, and we were talking about the Parkway here, where it's too congested or you have some to line turns and the like, you can actually have them geo-diminish that so it's not shut off. But maybe your governor goes from fifteen miles an hour, which is what the ordinance says and the contract with Bird Ride says, down to something more like ten miles an hour, twelve miles an hour. And I was thinking something around Marat Park, it's pretty congested, you have dogs off-leash down there, that would be a good area where if you're going to even let scooters go in at all, dockless scooters, e-scooters go in at all, you may want to diminish the speeds on that just so that an animal wouldn't get hurt or a person wouldn't get hurt. So there's a lot of nuances here. The boundaries are different. I may not know if some further planning, but things have come along pretty well and so, and we're certainly open for your questions and comments and thoughts because this is kind of a new thing, at least for this community. Obviously, traffic rules, traffic signs will have to be obeyed by bicycles and e-scooters, and that's going to be part of the ordinance. Lights and reflectors, you know, they're not going to have any type of turn signals and things of that nature, but they will have to have headlights and reflectors at a minimum. They'll have to have some type of ability to have a sound, say if you're on the Parkway or you're going through a crosswalk on a street, you can hear your bell. And that's what they want most of these seem to have, is basically giving a manual type of bell, if you would rate. With respect to riding on sidewalks and right-of-way, well, again, if it's in this twenty miles an hour area, you can't do that. Say you're going to take one of these e-scooters up and you're going to go into your house, go into a relative's house somewhere up in a different part of the town. Well, if it's in the thirty mile an hour zone, you can ride bicycles, e-scooters on those. It's been a distinction. We've had a long time for bicycles. If it's a thirty mile an hour road, you can actually ride your bicycles on the sidewalks. But pedestrians, and this is about this particular provision, everyone says pedestrians have the right-of-way there. So if you're on the sidewalks, they have the full right-of-way with respect to that. Again, riding abreast of more than one bicycle or one e-scooter is prohibited, so you're not taking up too much space. And also you don't have to worry about, you know, bumping into each other and having some type of a collision. Cannot ride, of course, on any type of fixtures in the downtown area. We don't want to have kind of the skateboard phenomenon with respect to bicycles or e-scooters riding up on the planters, the benches, that type of thing. So that's, again, prohibited within the ordinance. Parents and guardians were saying that if you're letting, basically, you should not be allowing your children, under the age of sixteen, ride scooters, bicycles in the downtown area on these streets. So that, again, is another effort to make this whole endeavor a little bit safer for the population, but still let those who have a driver's license and have some maturity be out on the streets. And people who want to use these e-scooters and get around town, whether for sightseeing or just to have some fun, they can do that. Basically, the one thing that I think that the police department's been quite concerned about are, you know, what happens if you finish your ride? Are these going to be ground? Are people going to be tripping on them and the like? Mr. Cavato, when he spoke with you last time, talked about, you know, they have this set up so that they're easy to park upright, so they think that less space. And then we put in the ordinance as well as into our requirements that they not infringe upon a five-foot distance on sidewalks for ADA purposes, that they cannot be parked in front of people's ingress, egress into their businesses, they can't be parked on private property in people's driveways and that type of thing. So there's a whole list of those, if you've been able to get through the proposed ordinance so far. So there's really quite a bit of that. Basically, we've also said that not only for you, Bird, because there may be some other ones that come in here besides Bird Rides, but all of you, you know, you need to give at least some type of training, some notice to these people that there's some requirements, that there's some prohibited areas in the downtown if you're going to be renting these dockless scooters. And at that regard, that'd be a requirement not only in the ordinance, but also of our contract with Bird, her rides. Again, for purposes of protection of the public. You're talking with Mr. Cavato, we talked about, you know, the cost that cities get. You've kind of had the high end, which is Seattle, and you have some of the lower ends. And he said that Cheyenne was actually kind of a, he thought a reasonably priced one, but one that we had, we were pretty far above when we made our offer to him initially. So we've kind of come down from that a little bit, passed it back and forth. But basically, what we're looking at as far as fees for, you know, public safety, for administration, because it's going to take some administration to enforce these regulations, you're going to have to have permits on each of the scooters. They have to be monitored by the community service folks or by the police department. We're concerned if something is stolen or thrown into the river and the like. So Bird has said, hey, look, we have people, they have rafting hooks, we're used to doing this, they'll be trained to come out. And we anticipate that anything that would be submerged in the river, we can get out within, you know, four days, basically. And so hopefully that will be a concern that we'll have, but it won't be called upon, it won't be called upon very often to help them out. But again, the police department does want to know if things have been stolen, if we do have missing scooters that might be in the river for pollution concerns and that type of, of, you know, of process. The additional matters with respect to that then are basically three thousand dollars per calendar year plus twenty-five dollars per scooters per calendar year would be the fees that Bird had suggested, they felt they could do after we had had some back and forth. They felt that would be appropriate. And then looking at kind of the fees between what we might do in Cheyenne and less than what they would do in Seattle, it seemed like we might be in a situation where if you feel comfortable with it, if the clerk feels comfortable with it, and, you know, public servants do feel comfortable with it, we could start there and see how things go. If there's a lot of demand placed upon the police department or the fire department, then we can look at modifying that pursuant to the ordinance. But for now, that's what we have in there, but it's certainly not set any type of scoring at all. So feel free to give that some thought, to visit with some of your staff members about that, and make sure that you feel comfortable with this as well. One of the interesting things that I did realize they had was actually data they asked for that's written in real time. And they said, we'll be happy to share that with the police department. So basically, if someone at the police department wants to say, you know, where are they having all of the activity with these scooters? If we need to have people out there, whether it's the bicycle, people in the police department or some, something else, they can actually kind of monitor that over a period of days and see where most of the traffic goes. See if they're having a bunch of bikes abandoned in a particular area. If you drive them out there, you set them down and then you all jump into a car and go off to the end of the road. So in any event, very interesting, kind of neat technology. And I think the people that have done it have enjoyed it quite a bit, at least the people I've visited with. So that is what the ordinance overview is. And we'd be happy to answer questions, and we're happy to answer questions after we talk about the contract even more. Any questions right now?
Counselman Nell?
Thank you, John. One of the, I looked this over today, and one of the only things I see, we could run into a problem is ten-six-four-zero-nine-zero says riding on sidewalks is not permitted. The problem we're going to have with that in every town I've ever been to where they have these, that's where they get parked. They get parked on the outer part of the sidewalk next to the street. Somebody has to ride up on there to be able to park it there. And they're going to get caught riding on there, and it's in direct correlation with what we have written. So we might, we might have to reword this in order to facilitate the parking part of it so that we're not, you know, we're asking them to park them there, but we're telling them they can't drive on there. So it's going to create a big problem, I can already see.
Very good. I think that's a good comment and a good thought process because, you know, there is no doubt about that. Because right now, we do limit them, they can't drive on the sidewalks within that confined area. And, you know, if they drive up there, and if you can think of some verbiage in that regard where they can drive up and they get to a crosswalk or they get to the corner where you have the ramps that go up, and maybe they can go up there again with the requirement that pedestrians have, the four-wheel drive away, I think that would be a possibility. And of course, they can always, you know, stop and get bent down and pick them up. But again, you don't want them sitting around out in the street where they're not over either. So I think there's a good balance and a concern there to be discussed and thought about.
Counselman Kethlin?
It looks, excuse me. It looks like we've spent a lot of time dealing with Bird, but I guess I wonder about the local people that are already renting these scooters. They have not done any of these permits, they have not done any of these types of things. And we're imposing, this is almost like Walmart coming in and driving out to mom and pops. And I don't believe that we should be in any kind of a contract with these people. You either put it in the ordinance and it takes care of itself on the free business side of it, or we tell them, we don't care if you come or not. But right now, we don't charge people that rent bicycles, we don't charge people that, we don't charge enterprise, Hertz, any of the other vehicle rental people. So why are we headed down this road for this particular group that I'm not sure one of the local people can afford these kinds of fees? And I hate to see us driving out local, local people with this.
I think it's a good thing to be thinking about. The distinction that I had, and I thought about that too, because I don't know of any local people, but I anticipate that there, even if we don't have any right now, that we could have some.
We have at least one right now.
Yeah. But I don't think that there, that, again, we made the distinction between e-scooters and dockless scooters. And so the dockless scooters are those that don't have a place to go, they don't have a destination to go to, they don't have a parking area which has been obtained. If we have them in Casper, my guess is that somebody's putting them out of their garage or out at their storefront or something like that. And so you pick them up, you return it to me. This ordinance doesn't apply to us, at least with respect to the dockless. So in that regard, they have a little bit of a leg up over the people that would be coming in with bigger fleet. So I don't know what that balance is, I'll leave that up to, of course, all of you, but I think that's the distinction, at least that's what I was thinking about when I was going through this thing. You know, I don't think we're going to hurt our folks here, at least the ones that I anticipate could be starting up, you know, when we have, you know, a dozen or something like that. They're going to come in with at least fifty. And actually, in talking with Mr. Cavato, he thought they might be up to a hundred or even more than a hundred, even before the end of the year, if things go well. Who knows? But that's certainly a possibility.
Well, like I said, my big concern is, is protecting the local businessmen that have already been here for a year or more. And basically, they are, yeah, you go pick it up at their spot, you take it back to their spot. You could park it anywhere you wanted, but basically it needs to go back to that spot at the end of the day or at the end of your rental. So it isn't something you can just leave.
See, and I think that's it, because a lot of the fees that we have here, it's kind of a public safety concern. You know, you've got those that are going to be left around, and we do have the fire department and the police department that may get called down on occasion to help track some of those down, are efficient under their weight. Where hopefully those people that are taking them out, returning them, you know, that owner's going to give a little bit more, I suspect, a little more fervorly.
Counselmember Paul?
A little bit of a follow-on there. So in the scenario that we're describing with this, the local business owner who I do know is renting some scooters now, this, the permit, the three thousand dollar permit plus permitting on each scooter would not apply because we're thinking of those as two separate types of scooters. Is that right? We've got the scooters that just live wherever, and we've got the scooters that live in somebody's possession at their business. All right? Okay. I do have one question along that line as well, if that's okay. I'm feeling a little bit weird about this distinction between the sixteen versus eighteen, just because Birds is eighteen. Let's say another dockless scooter company comes in that wants to rent theirs to sixteen-year-olds. I think it's a, I would be more comfortable setting them at sixteen across the board and then letting the individual companies decide for themselves who they want to rent to and what their own terms of, terms of doing business with their clients would be. I don't know if Bird has that mechanism within their app where they can verify age or something like that, but seems to me that setting it at sixteen across the board and just letting each entity decide what they're comfortable with at that or above that would be appropriate.
Now, I'll just add to that. License wouldn't be required to operate these anyway, so even setting an age, I don't even think is, I mean, how important is an age on this? It's not like you have to have a driver's license to operate them. And I agree, what if somebody came in and said, hey, anybody twelve and above can rent our product? Now you're limiting, you're limiting that, you know.
We're treating them sort of like bikes, and you don't have to be at a certain age to ride a bike. And I'm kind of swirling around in that same thing as like people who buy these privately and own them, like what if they're not sixteen? And then what do we, what do we do with that?
Adam, I think an age limit is necessary, and the companies, if they want to set an age limit, can say, you have to have a driver's license to rent our products, and that's up to them.
That's their choice.
Well, this may be a question more for the, for the police chief than, than anybody else, but you see the people that have got their license, the four-wheelers. Now, if they're out riding that on a street, do they have to have a valid driver's license?
They're riding four-wheelers?
Yes.
Yes, they do.
Okay.
It's got to be licensed and insured if they're driving it on a public street. Only time that wouldn't apply if you're on a ORB trailer or something like that.
Just was interested in clarifying that.
I think the reason that we considered this age group if I may, Mr. Counsel, was simply because kids at an older age make better decisions, they're not darting out of cars, things like that. So that was kind of some of the considerations, they may have a better thought process when they're out there.
But someone could privately buy one for their kid, and the kid can go drive around the streets without...
It still creates issues for the community as a whole, right? Like there has to be an education piece across the board. If you're going to be renting this out to a twelve-year-old, make sure that maybe the company does a education piece on, hey, here's the safety, don't go off the curb, make sure you're looking both ways. Same thing you do with the toddlers and kids, teach them the rules of the road in early age versus the age where they're too far gone. Makes sense?
I think just to add to it too, though, is that when we talk about four-wheelers, we're talking about engine size. And there's a certain, there's a certain threshold, I don't remember what it is. Fifty cc. So i- if these scooters fall underneath that, then a license isn't required. If they, if they are above that, then it is required. So, uh, so it's kind of like apples and oranges when we're talking four-wheelers.
I was just trying to get a feel for where some of the other regulations were and stuff. Because I notice, I've noticed kids out riding them on the street, and so that's why I was, I was curious. I'm not gonna go turn them in or anything, but it's, it's something you see, and so just.
To add to that, a C endorsement, you can ride a four-wheeler with the district regular C endorsement. Or a motorcycle, you have to have an M endorsement if there's a little more involved with your driving test with a motorcycle.
I've still got one of those Ms.
Councilmember Paul.
The other thing I'm thinking about that, that I don't know if we've considered or not, but, um, you know, by, by changing these ordinances, we're, we're essentially making this a possibility for folks who are renting from these companies or folks who are owning these privately, it, to, to be riding around. I mean, it's already, I guess, s- sort of allowed, but kind of confusing. Thinking about the geofencing, like, we can require Bird to do that through this process, but not individuals. So I do think like some signage or, um, education about what areas are allowed and what areas are not allowed. It might not be, it's not so simple as like, oh, well, these scooters won't work there because there could be a host of other scooters around in, in the city that are not attached to that geofencing. So we would also have to deal with that in a, in another way as well.
Company has the geofencing capability, right, in their technology?
Correct.
They do.
Like, if you go buy one personally, or I don't know about the other local guy, they may not. So that's what you're talking about, correct?
They have an audible alarm once you approach the boundary.
But they may not have the geofencing in them.
Well, I mean, if I just went and bought one online, it wouldn't be programmed with any particular geofencing.
Right, I get that. But the ones that are will have an audible alarm once you approach the boundary.
Yeah, so those will just, I think, stop working or not, simply not start in that area. But we would have potential that there are some that would work in that area, so we would need a, a backup plan for that as well.
Well, we're talking about an area, though, that you can't go into. So geofencing only would help you by stopping you prior to getting a ticket. And the ones that don't have it, if you go into the area you're not supposed to be in, then it doesn't help you out. So I mean, it's, it, what it boils down to is what's the area we're gonna allow them in? And, and if somebody goes into that area, you're in violation.
I mean, I guess the other thing too, not that I'm like completely, you know, uptown, seeing everything and out and about, but I, I don't see a lot of the, those scooters, those e-scooters. And if, and if the guy who's renting them is, I mean, there's a lot of it. I don't see a big conflict of seeing that. I just don't see those, those out there a lot. I mean, I may be wrong, I mean, you know, you know the guy that rents it, maybe you know.
Well, I know, I know, I don't know the guy who rents it, but I know there's a guy who rents it, and I know multiple people who own them personally and zip around downtown.
Okay, so they're doing it, okay, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's a handful of folks at least who, who own it currently. So, just, I don't want them to get a ticket because they're like, what? And there's no sign, like, they don't know, like, where the boundary is, where the threshold is. So just, you know, to think about, how do we let people know where the boundaries are? How do we post that up? How do we educate people?
Right, and I think it's like, yeah, what the captain was saying is that I think it's about education, about how we do those things.
Councilman Gamora.
Thank you. A couple of things. Um, I spoke to Gordon, and my understanding was, I hope I'm not misrepresenting, but my understanding was that these scooters that he rents are the exact same ones that Bird is thinking of bringing here, but it sounds like there's some additional software or something, um, required for the geofence. I asked him, and he said, his scooters have that ability, but he doesn't currently have that functionality. So they're capable of it, but there must be some additional cost or something, I imagine. Um, I believe he had them in the parade, I think they had them zipping around in the parade today. I had, so I know Mike has been down speaking to Cheyenne City Council as well. Two weeks ago, they just passed emergency ordinance in Cheyenne to allow these scooters for Cheyenne Frontier Days use. And so my whole thing about this is I felt like we've been going really fast. And so I, I'm personally interested if we've reached out to, uh, representatives from Cheyenne and, um, well, if we've compared, number one, what we're deliberating to what they passed two weeks ago, and if there's any opportunity for us to let them kind of be a guinea pig for six weeks or so and kind of flesh out what, you know, what the issues are so that we can make maybe a little more informed. I just liking, I, I like making well-informed decisions, and I, this is something I still, there's, I feel like there's not a lot of great public information out about it. It's a lot of just opinions and not like great research and stuff like that. So I'm a little worried about how quickly we're moving through this. Just wanted to put that out there. And then, one last thing, I, I see that, um, some municipalities, in order to make their cities more amenable to this type of transportation, you know, less cars on the road, more people biking and scootering, they are earmarking revenue generated from agreements with, you know, e-scooter operators and stuff, and using it to increase the width of bike lanes and build locking corrals for those around the city and stuff. And so I just wonder if that's something we could consider as far as, you know, using that income, earmarking it to improve, maybe, uh, because I'm interested to see how this plays out with that big chunk of downtown taken out. I know people that use scooters and they go through, you know, that, that's the major appeal in my mind of the downtown area is going to, you know, that's, that's where everyone's at, is that big yellow area. You get a little bit of, nobody's gonna take a scooter from the Yellowstone Garage to the corner of David and Second, you know, two blocks away before they have to hop off and walk all the way down the frontier or something like that. So, um, I'm interested to see how it plays out, maybe people use them. But, um, I would love to see our city just kind of think for, you know, future planning. You know, understand that people are gonna be using this type of transportation more often, and they want, they want to be doing it. So making sure that our city can accommodate it. That's all I have, sorry, just a bunch of word vomit, nothing specific. But I do know they're, you know, they just, they just passed those emergency ordinance and, uh, ordinances in Cheyenne two weeks ago. And so I'd love to get their input on what they've seen so far. I know there was a letter to the editor in Laramie Live. It's Laramie publisher a couple of days ago, and that author wasn't a fan, but it was more of an opinion piece. So, uh, you know, just want more information, as always, thanks.
Vice Mayor Pacheco.
Thank you. As I know the chief and a couple of other, I know, I know this certainly presents some issues and challenges for, for some municipalities doing this. But I wonder if we're overthinking it. And, and I think, I'm wondering, I know we need to get this right, and I know we need to do that. But I, I think sometimes we, we overthink it, and, and I, I think we can try it. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. And if it becomes a big problem for the, for the city, we just, you know, we say, okay, does this work for the city? We try it for a summer, and if it becomes a complete disaster, the police are coming to us saying, this is not working. You know, we're not having a good time with this, it's not working, we're having a lot of guys working out doing this and this, then we go back. But I think sometimes we over, come too overthinking these things. When a lot of these municipalities are utilizing this, and I think Kyle kind of hit it a little bit by sitting and saying, oh, this is a lot of what people are using. And so I think we can be a progressive city and trying to try to do something like this. But I think we gotta sometimes kind of sit back and say, okay, here are some of the issues, but let's give it a shot.
Councilmember Paul.
I, I, I do think we should give some, I agree. I, I think we should give some serious consideration to, to the boundary. And I think that is probably the, the most critical thing. And the second thing I'll say is, I, I'm not sure we need to wait for, to see how it goes in Cheyenne. There are thousands of cities that we could use to compare and try to, try to find, you know, a place that they're operating. And probably Bird can tell you, like, what's a place that's similar to our city in demographics and size and the type of, you know, size of fleet that you have there? Can we call somebody? And I, I, I imagine they could give us a, a recommendation. I don't think we have to, you know, restrict ourselves to just collecting the data from how it's played out in other Wyoming cities. Um, but, but I, I am concerned about the, about the boundaries, um, because I, I do think that that, that would dramatically alter how people are using this. So I just think we should be thoughtful about that. Otherwise, I agree, we can, we can, we can make changes as we go, but we can get, you know, try it out and see how it works.
Councilman Nell.
Thank you, I, I agree with Amber, I don't like the downtown, um, boundary, John. Um, I think it really inhibits the entire thing. I've been in Austin where it's forty miles an hour downtown, and these scooters are flying all over the place. People obey traffic laws, they have to understand that when they, when they rent them. And, um, I, I mean, that just takes the allure of the whole thing away by taking that area away. And, um, I like Amber's idea. I say we, we open it up, we give it a shot, we see how it works, and Ray said the same thing. And we can evaluate it at the, at the end of this year. Because they're all, they're not gonna have a very long time to be able to run these. But, uh, when, when, uh, Mr. Cabato initially talked to us about the geofencing, that was more for, um, specific hours, if I recall, so that the folks from the bars couldn't get on them and go zipping around. So they could shut them off during specific times. I, I don't recall us ever limiting where they could go on them. An hour downtown is only twenty miles an hour anyway. So, uh, it, I mean, that would be a heck of a lot safer than some places I've seen these things operated in. So I'd sure be interested in seeing us take the boundary off as well. Thank you.
Uh, Councilman Kep.
This downtown exclusion area, does it only apply to the scooters? Or does it fall into the bicycles, the skateboards, and everything else?
Uh, everything else.
Everything else? So I can't write a, we've got issues then, I would have to go along with the other people about the boundaries on air because you have people riding bicycles up and down First Street, Second Street, all through this downtown area. So do what?
There's bicycle lanes on the road in downtown.
Well, yep, so. So we, so we need to, we need to change something in the wording there at the top of page six to be able to allow the bicycles and things. Because, yeah, there's people downtown that, their transportation to and from work.
Yeah, skateboards and rollerblades.
Yeah. I just wanted to make sure how I was reading that, what we were thinking.
Councilman Gamora.
Thank you. And Councilman Kathy, uh, thanks for your point. That's precisely why I think we're moving too fast, because that's an obvious thing that we need to address. Uh, and it's not baked into this yet. I personally am not super opposed to being a little experimental with this, but I didn't get the opportunity to go over this contract with a fine-tooth comb, and so I'm just wondering how binding it is. Do we have flexibility to, if something happens in the first several weeks and we realize, ooh, we forgot something, or we didn't think about this, what ability do we have to adjust this contract? Or is it, you know, solid for a year? Again, I haven't, uh, we're not, we're not passing it tonight, correct? This is just a draft that we're, it's in consideration, we're not saying yea or nay on this one tonight.
Mr. Hanlon.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, no, that's correct, uh, councilman. This is just, yeah, just a discussion tonight, trying to get your thoughts and ideas, and have some verbiage out there. So, uh, and the, the contract as, as currently is drafted, there is a provision where the city can terminate it on thirty days' notice, that the parties can get together if something isn't working, and if there's mutual agreement, of course, with any other contract, you can modify the contract that way. And so there are, there are options. You may not want to get yourself into something if you think that, uh, it, you know, fifteen miles an hour is, uh, is too fast. You may not want to give them that flexibility because they may want to back off that. If, if you want to modify this so that there's more downtown area, there's probably no big deal with that. But maybe have some type of provision within the contract that if, if there seems to be some type of a hazard, that you have the right to come in and request geofencing upon, you know, two weeks' notice or something along those lines. Maybe advantageous as well. So, so lots of interest here in town and lots of different perspectives. So, uh, so I think that's kind of where you guys and gals are gonna have the difficulty just because it, uh, there, there are a lot of different people out there. Some that probably don't want to have these at all, other people are gonna embrace them rather than.
The one thing I want to add is, I realize, Kyle, that we're moving quick on this, but if we wait six weeks, um, s- snow's gonna fly. So it would be kind of fruitless to even be, be doing this. So I'm open to, to try it for this period of time and then tweak it as we go. I mean, there's gonna be a certain point that you're not gonna be able to use them because the weather's gonna, gonna stop it anyway, so.
Councilman Kep.
I guess, uh, you know, I don't really have a problem opening it up for a bigger area downtown, but I can see real problems between Durbin and David Street, which is the curvy part where the angle parking is, allowing them in that section there. Because you don't want them on the sidewalks because of the planters, the streetlights, the benches. And with the angle parking, you can't see anybody on a little bitty scooter trying to back out. I mean, hell, you can barely see anybody in a car coming down the street with the angle parking. And I'm afraid somebody's gonna get run over on one of them, uh, down in that area. That's, that's my only concern with it is, is that one section right through on Second Street.
Councilman Gamora.
Sorry, I know you probably sit there listening to me. But going back to my point about having more like, uh, long-term planning about this sort of stuff, this isn't an immediate solution, but I, I know in years past, there's been ideas floated of making like, uh, the alley right, right there across from David Street into sort of a promenade of sorts where food trucks could park along and stuff. It'd be awesome if we could like, you know, convert that alley to a, 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 a parkway for scooters and pedestrians. Make it nicer, you know, food truck alley or something like that, you know? But I agree with Councilman Kathy's point, I think it's gonna get a little dodgy in one or two of those streets. I don't think we should restrict that whole downtown end, uh, area because I think it loses a lot of the appeal. But I think it's gonna get a little dodgy in there sometimes, so.
Vice Mayor Pacheco.
I agree it can be dodgy, but I, I think actually Bruce made a point. I mean, downtown San, San Antonio, and I've ridden them in San Diego. I mean, I think they're in Colorado, down in Denver. And we're talking about big cities. And so, I mean, I, I think that there is that case of, of that chance of something happening. But I think of huge cities, and maybe, and maybe having to look at the data to see accidents versus what happens there. But I'm, I'm not sure, um, you know, if that's the, I guess I'm trying to say is that, is that something where we need to be concerned coming here in Casper, that we're gonna be looking at a lot of accidents? So if you're doing it, when I was in San Diego, the only place I've ever used it in San Diego in downtown, it was not, it wasn't too bad at all, so.
Well, I guess maybe to add to that, maybe we need to have the PD just tell us, you know, what kind of, how many tickets have been written down there for skateboarders? Or, or like Sean was saying, we have bike lanes in the downtown area, but we make it to where, you know, it's supposed to be down there with bikes. I'd kind of like to look at that whole thing right now. And, uh, if, if we're not having a problem and have not had a problem with it for years, then maybe we ought to look at that and take that out completely and, and start all over.
Councilmember Paul.
Yeah, I actually do think that we, we should be looking at, I, I had no idea that was even in the ordinance in the first place, that you weren't allowed to be riding those things downtown because it is so common, and we should be encouraging it, right? I mean, this is like, that's how you get to like a healthier community, is more people riding bikes, more people on a, on a longboard going to work instead of, you know, I know that we gotta do it in a way that is, is safe and all of that, but, but I don't think we should be throwing up barriers. So I do think we should look at that just as a, as a whole thing. And then with the, with, with the Second Street area getting a little dodgy, I, I think it will, but I'm not sure that we need to like geofence that one street. I think most people will not feel safe riding along those parked cars, and I think that they will, they will sort of self-regulate. In, in a, in the vast majority of cases, I think it will, it will self-regulate. And in my experience, when I've been on them in bigger cities and it gets into a part that seems more congested or whatever, I'll hop off of it and walk it on sidewalk until I get to a place that is, that, that is safe again. And so I think just some general, you know, uh, common sense will, will probably alleviate the vast majority of issues related to that.
Well, I would like to make a suggestion then that we take that portion of it that deals with bicycles, skateboards and whatnot, and just take that out altogether. And it, there were reasons it was put in, in the past, but it was, it was not necessarily for the safety of others. It was for potential damage downtown, in downtown areas. So, um, so I, I would put that out there and I'd see, what's everybody's thoughts on that?
I agree, I agree with you.
I agree, maybe Keith's a part about keeping all the barriers and all that.
Yeah, yeah, and keep in there. I mean, you still can't take a skateboard and get up on a planter and tear up the concrete or whatever it might be. That, obviously, you need to ride a bike like you ride a bike in a skateboard like you ride a skateboard, but not, not to go down there and, and tear things up. So those, those things would stay in place, but it's. But as far as being able to use it in that area, just get rid of that and allow that to happen again.
My whole deal is, is people still haven't learned to drive our roundabout, and they haven't learned how to make double left-hand turns. And those are simple compared to this. You know, follow the white lines, people.
The state, the state still issues them driver's licenses.
Mr. Henley, do you?
The state still issues them driver's licenses.
Oh, yeah.
Have you seen any issues in us removing that portion of that out of there?
No, actually, that would be fine. Basically, what we'd be looking at would be just e-scooters and dockless scooters, or just dockless scooters. Based, just addressing those and then pulling everything else out with respect to the toy vehicles, the bicycles, the skateboards, regular scooters that are not powered by electric vehicles.
Are we, are we, I'm thinking altogether, everything.
Basically, doing away with the banned area downtown.
Oh, okay. So, so do we, you want to have any restrictions on the dockless scooters? Or the regular scooters, e-scooters?
For that downtown area?
The area or? Yeah, I'm confused.
I think we're talking about, because in that downtown area, we've taken and said that nobody can be in this area, period. And we're saying do away with that, allow whoever to go down there.
Skateboarders, bicyclists, rig shop operators.
But they stay off the sidewalks, right?
Yes. Or, well, no, no. I, I don't know what his intent is.
They have to be able to go on the sidewalk to dock it.
Yeah.
And, and, Mr. Mayor, maybe I can try to summarize a little bit of what, what I think may be being proposed to the attorney. The, the issue at heart, I think, is that big yellow square in the guts of the downtown. Because indeed, if you, if you keep that in place, in the ordinance as, as it's written right now, you've got some major inconsistencies, right? And so what I think is being proposed is eliminating the inconsistencies, eliminating the dead zone for, for things in that, in the guts of the downtown, so that the guts of the downtown can be enjoyed by folks of all types of alternative transportation modes, right? The point about docking on the sidewalk, I think we can write language in such a way that allows for that to happen, but not using sidewalks as, as a conveyance for these types of alternatives in transportation. But merely to park, merely to park.
The only problem I can see is skateboards and longboards on sidewalks down.
And rollerblades and roller skates.
But again, I, I, I would tell you, you probably go downtown at any given time, you're going to find people on skateboards. And that's where I come back to, I wonder in the last several years, how many issues we've actually had of people on skateboards downtown that have created problems. Vice Mayor Pacheco.
And I, and I think being, being somewhat, you know, understanding, I don't think this is going to open up the floodgates. Sorry, skateboards and scooters and bicyclists and roller skaters all saying, oh, now we can go on the sidewalks, we can do this. I don't think that's the case. And I think we're, again, going back to, I think we're overthinking some of this stuff. But if we eliminate this, I don't think it's going to be that crazy. Now, if the police department comes back to us and says, we got a real problem here, you changed your ordinance, and we've got some major problems, we can't control this. I, but I don't see that happening.
Okay. Does, can anybody, well, uh, uh, Councilmember Pollock, any businesses downtown, I think, because are businesses going to be comfortable if you have skateboards cruising up and down and bicycles cruising up and down your sidewalks?
Um, I mean, we already do, so I, I'm not, I, I agree with Councilman Pacheco. I don't know how much this will change behavior and what type of result it will have. I, I don't know. I mean, I think, I, I think we, if we open this up to public comment, we can certainly reach out to some folks and say, you know, let us know what you, how you think this will, will impact things. But, um, you know, I, I'm, I'm not sure exactly what the impact would be. But I do think that, that we already have rollerbladers on the streets downtown, or on the sidewalk downtown. We already have skateboarders, we have longboarders. I mean, our sidewalks are not so congested typically that it's problematic. But, yeah. So I'm, I'm not sure about the sidewalk thing versus the street thing, but, but I think opening up public comments that people can tell us what they think is the next step.
Well, in, to your point, in that, it's exactly what I was saying. It happens, and it has been happening. And I think if we look through the PD, we'll find that there, it has been an issue, there hasn't been citations written. So this is, it's been a rule out there that hasn't really been followed or anybody's really obeyed. We have three readings on this, so don't open the public comment. You got the next three readings in order to say something, so.
There you go.
I, so I, I guess I'm asking thumbs up or thumbs down on removing that out of the downtown area, no, up or down that side?
Be cool, Steve, with reservations.
Thumbs up for me.
You'll be cool with Gen Z.
Sure. I just know that when you find some of them breaking the law, there's no point in trying to call or do anything, because they're gone by the time anybody's going to get there.
That's it.
Yeah. But when you wind up with one of them riding down Centennial Hills Boulevard on their longboard, coming off the top up by Heathrow, down towards the other, and they're weaving in and out the yellow, the, the center line coming down the road, and you honk at them and you get waved at with one finger, I mean.
Say before you can come out and shake your fist at them.
Yeah, that isn't the finger they use.
All right, Mr. Seaman.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Henley, where, where did we come out on pathways, the use of pathways?
You know, uh, the Trails Trust is having their board meeting tomorrow, so I don't know what their thought processes on that. Uh, they were, a couple of years ago, didn't, didn't like the idea of e-bikes. E-bikes really aren't used on pathways right now very often. The regular bikes are. So we'll see how, you know, I've had some correspondence with the Angeles, so we'll see what they think about that, that we should know by tomorrow.
Mr. Mayor, my, my recommendation would be that we go ahead and write the ordinance in such a way that pathways can have these types of conveyances engaged. And, and if the trust wants to come and lobby the council to take it off, then that's what the three-reading process is all for.
One other logistical question. Have, have the two paths going, and right now they're parallel. We have the contract on the one hand with the Bird rides, and then on the other hand, the ordinance. The contract is basically resolution, I do it by resolution like any other contract that you approve. So I don't know if you want to continue to, I was anticipating we would be pushing that through and then filling up with the ordinance, and maybe getting at least a couple of weeks, you know, three or four weeks of, of Bird operating while you're doing the ordinance. I don't know if you want to do that, or you want to have it both kind of coalesce and just say, you're not going to have your contract until the ordinance is done. So if you have any preference in that regard, um, you know, we, we probably, if you, if you can give me at least some idea, we can't take it up here officially, but to, that would at least give me some idea and talk to the Metro Beto and, and try and to, to gauge how we, we should, we should.
Councilmember Paul.
Uh, I, I guess I feel a little uncomfortable pushing the contract through before it's really, before you've addressed some of these things. It seems like there's, it's kind of a mess as it, as it is now. And so it feels a little confusing. We could probably make it work if, if people think the other way. I mean, I don't want to hold it up, but it does seem a little sticky to roll out a new program when we've got all of these different things that we need to address. Additionally, on, on the contract, if we're off the ordinance now and on the contract, I wonder, when, when we came up with the $3,000 fee number, how, how many, how many places did we look for that? I, I'm a little hesitant to have Bird themselves as an entity drive too much of our policy on this, because I don't want them to say like, well, $3,000 is the right number, when for them it might be right, but for another company it might be completely unreasonable. I mean, I, I know that there's a, a per scooter, but if somebody wants to come in with 25 scooters, $3,000 flat fee may not be, may not be interesting to them. So I wonder, uh, you know, who, who came up with that number? Where did it come from and like, what did we base it on?
Basically, we had had a three-tier, um, per scooter per year thing. During the heavy season, we'd get charged more per scooter. Shoulder season, a little bit less. And then the off-season, almost the minimum for, for doing that. Bird added that up, and then they said, you know, doing that, basically you're charging more per scooter. And I looked at it too, and it looked like you're basically more per scooter in Seattle, which is kind of known to be the worst, and, and actually got people pulled out of there because it is such a high cost to live in, which is why two, two big companies and one of them pulled out. Um, and so, you know, we talked about this, and I, and I think the upside for Bird on this was that, well, we, we come in, we, we pay you something that makes it kind of worth your while. So we look at it, $3,000, and then this additional money. And we kind of know where we stand, because then each marginal, uh, uh, each, each scooter is just a marginal cost. And we don't have to worry about kind of these fiddling that whether it's busy season, shoulder season, or off-season. So, so we, we kind of came up with this. Like I say, I believe it's quite a bit higher than it is in Tri-Ann, but we can find out. I don't know for sure. I haven't looked at the ordinance, and how far as to hear that's a, an emergency ordinance. I think you, Councilman Hamoff, probably you know that. So we can sort of track that down and actually get the verbiage.
So, Mr. Henley, it would make sense to do this. We can get a lot of our questions answered, you know, over the next three readings if we do a res, or do the contract on third reading by resolution. But that gives us three readings. I know it shortens the season down, but there are questions that need to be answered. And we, we wouldn't necessarily be rushing through it. You're going to have six more weeks until.
Right, the end of, of September, probably.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Councilmember Paul.
A slight alternative proposal would be to not commit right now to when we will off the contract, but, you know, at the third minimum, at the third reading at the latest. But if it all comes together, the first reading, and then we go through the second reading and there are no significant objections at that point, we're feeling good about this, you know, then maybe. So I would just suggest that we don't commit ourselves to when we will have the contract, aside from just tell them we are moving this forward. And, you know, at, at a minimum, once it passes three readings, we can move ahead.
Okay.
That'll be fine.
I guess I'll go back to the original, one of the original questions is, why aren't the fees and that type of thing put into the ordinance? That way, everybody knows what they are going in. And just eliminate the contract. We don't need a contract. All that's doing is opening up a can of worms down the road. And in essence, what you're really doing is charging a franchise fee.
Councilmember Paul.
Um, yeah. Would every company who wants to rent, let's say even a single dockless scooter here, need to enter into a contract with the city to be able to do that?
That's part of my whole point as well. And you are now saying that, and here again, one scooter is probably not going to be a dockless scooter. It's going to be something similar to what Gordon's got right now, which doesn't even fall under any of this. So, um, that gets back to the same thing as to, you know, do we really need a contract with them? And, and as far as other businesses coming in, come in, here's the ordinance, pay your money, and go do your thing.
And I tell you, we were thinking about a contract just because of the, trying to, to, they, they were the ones that came in and got us thinking about this. We were trying to be accommodating to them as a business owner who kind of got us involved with this. So they couldn't do anything if we were waiting till the end of the ordinance. So this was a way to kind of expedite their entry and get them here while there was actually some good weather and, and some people in the downtown for our few days local container on the weekends.
I guess if we're worried about speeding the process up, we can actually do it in three weeks. Because we can have a regular meeting next week. We could have a special meeting at our work session, and we'd have our third reading that following week. So in three weeks, we could get this done and never have a contract.
Vice Mayor.
I'm just, here again, I'm talking and thinking out loud, is that I just, I hate getting the city involved in more contracts.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I, I think that the contract is a bit of a red herring in all this discussion, because the reality is, we didn't require a contract. This is a company that suggested doing it, particularly when it comes to giving us an added protection with respect to the liability that this unique business offering might pose for the city. The ordinance doesn't require a contract. And so the reality is, if another vendor were to come into the community and want to do a similar thing, if we write the ordinance correctly, the ordinance would be the empowering, uh, you know, ability that makes it happen. But the ordinance does not require a contract.
Well, that, that was my whole point, is then does the contract wind up maybe trying to shy people away or bring up questions in some of the smaller operators that I've got to have a contract, I've got to do all of this type of a thing?
Mr. Mayor, we're not asking for a contract, Councilman.
I understand that, yeah.
If indeed a company wants to come in and do it, and the contract never comes up, they may not have to have a contract. And so I'm saying, that's why I'm saying the contract is a bit of a red herring in all this. It, it offers the city additional protection, but we're not making it a condition of doing business.
Okay.
And so I don't think that would be a condition of anybody else doing business in a similar fashion either.
Okay.
But are the setting of fees part of that contract?
The setting of fees is a feature of that contract, but there, that's not to say we can't put it in the ordinance. But I would not say, let's throw the contract back at them, tell them we don't want it, because it does offer us additional protection.
And a little caveat then, we may want to put into the ordinance is that a contract is not required, but if requested, we would accommodate, or something like that, to just, to clarify it all for down the road when old white guys aren't here anymore.
Councilman Nell.
Thank you, Mayor. Or, if this is the way we're going to do it, and we're not going to require a contract, like, of course, we're going to accept Birds because of the protection it affords us, just like City Manager said. But we are going to have to somehow put in the ordinance that there are going to be fees attached, because if the next company comes in and doesn't have a contract, they don't have to pay any fees in order to operate. So if that's something we're going to do to Bird, I would think it's something that's going to have to be across the board for anybody else that would want to do it, just out of fairness. I, I personally, and I, I don't even like the fact that we're charging them anything. I, I mean, we have a police department, that's what they're paid to do. I, I don't know why we're charging $3,000 plus $25 a scooter. I don't want to look a gift horse in the mouth when it comes to money, but it, it just seems ridiculous to me. It's, it's almost like we're, we're pushing other people away, because they won't, may not be able to afford to pay that kind of money just to operate their business. But it's just a thought, that if we are going to do it for one, it's going to have to be in the ordinance for all, I would think. Thank you.
Councilmember Paul.
I agree, and that's, that's, I, I don't favor a flat fee plus a, plus a per scooter fee, because that like, structurally disadvantages smaller operators versus larger operators. So I, I would prefer to see it structured as a, a per scooter fee, or whatever we think. You know, the more scooters you have, the more potential impact to the city. So I, I would think that would be probably the most fair way to do it. I, I would hate to think that we're setting up a system that works only for Bird and Lime and the largest major operators of these, of these devices.
That's been part of my concern all along.
I'd also prefer that we do talk to other communities that have these and see what those fees are, because obviously there are other costs that are involved. And we have staff that are going to have to go through licensing process and things like that. So there is cost to the city itself by doing that, but not to set it so high that smaller companies can't come in.
Councilman Nell.
Sorry, I just wanted to throw this last thought in, when it was right on Amber's back pocket there. The, um, when I talked to the guy in Austin, they charge a permit fee per scooter, just like a car pays registration or a motorcycle or anything else that has to pay. They just charge a per, so that way it would be fair across the board, no matter how big or how small you are. You pay X amount of dollars to permit that scooter, that money goes to the city. You pay X amount of dollars to permit that scooter, that money goes to the city to help offset the cost, and then it's fair, no matter what size of an operation you're running.
Did you have anything else, Mr. Henley?
Nothing more, thank you very much.
Good, all right. Thank you for all the work you've done on this. What you've done was not easy. And then we come in and throw darts at it, so we appreciate everything you did.
Good job, Mayor. Throw in the garlic and stuff.
Just telling the manager, back in the day, like, when I was a kid, you used to have to get a permit for your bike, and you got to put it on there, so, on your personals, not...
Before they had cars.
It was. Right after horses. And if you're giving that kind of great change...
Then you have ten horses back then.
Permit for each one. Okay, agenda review, then, we'll move on, and in particular, bar and grill liquor licenses. Mr. City Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, you are now in a fairly unique position wherein you have two bar and grill licenses left to distribute.
I'll probably...
And, oh...
Know if we're launching right into that, or...
Sure. See how much rain's coming down. Oh, yeah. Yeah, if you've got windows down, you're getting wet.
But the problem that you have is, you've got three applications that are coming forward. One that is coming kind of at the head of the line, and two that are coming right on that business's heels. And so, the recommendation that I would have for you to consider is that, indeed, you hear all three arguments with respect to why each of those businesses should have a license, so that you can have all of that collection of data at your disposal, and therefore, make a more informed decision with regard to the, you know, the deployment of those last two licenses. Because unfortunately, it doesn't quite work out that you got two and two, and that kind of thing. You've got three applications coming, you've got two licenses to give, and I'm not sure when you'll have licenses like that, again, at your disposal to distribute.
Councilman Gatt. Question for you, and I don't recall all of the changes that were made in the bar and grill and the restaurant licenses, but I know that the restaurant license no longer has to have that separate out-of-sight, out-of-mind, "Oh, where did that drink come from?" type restrictions. And so, does, by the fact of that change in there, does that open up the possibility for some of these three? And I, we haven't seen them, obviously, but does that open up that opportunity because of that change in the state statute, for some of these people to be used, be able to use a restaurant license, which is unlimited? Because they both have the same 60/40 food alcohol split, and the main difference was the serving room.
Mr. Mayor, the other difference with regard to a restaurant license and the bar and grill is the idea that a bar feature would be incorporated into their business plan.
Okay.
And so, that is a dynamic that changes it for those who are eligible for a bar and grill, and those who are eligible for a restaurant license, because restaurant licenses, as you know, are table service type licenses. And so, I think the distinguishing factor, and probably why these three applicants want the bar and grill, is because they want a bar feature in their, in their facility. Now, you, as you read those applications, you might see some nuances that are different between the three of them, but I bet it won't be that bar feature. I bet they'll all have that. So, anyway, Mr. Mayor, the idea with regard to this portion of the agenda review is to give you that heads up, because the recommendation that I would offer for you to consider is, when you hear that first pitch, that you actually tabled the decision for that one until you've had the opportunity to hear all three, and then make a decision pursuant to having all three of those business cases made to you for the two licenses that you have left to give. That's basically the idea.
Councilman Gatt. A question from Mr. Henley. By tabling the first one until we get to the second two, and let's assume we don't give it to that first one, can he file suit, or does he have any legal standing, because he had made his application before we ever had the other two? And wind up with us in a legal mess?
Thank you, Councilman Cathy. I suspect that isn't the case. It's kind of up to your discretion. You now know that there are three applicants for this particular one, and just because you happen to be the first plaintiff at the courthouse step, or the first applicant down at the city hall with your application, doesn't mean that you're, you somehow have a leg up on the competition if someone comes in and is felt by the decision that they have a better case.
Okay.
So, I think you're okay there, as long as there's no type of overt discrimination, because he or she was the first one.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Nell.
Sir, did I read somewhere, is there a possibility that we may be having another one coming back to us? That's my question.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I'm going to defer to Fleur, who's on the call as well. I'm not aware of any others coming back, but Fleur, can you clarify further?
Yeah, can you all hear me?
Yep.
Okay, Your Honor, Mayor, we don't, we haven't heard of any, you might be thinking of the two we got back from Qdova, but we don't have any others that are currently coming back to us, or that we have gotten word of.
What is the status of, I believe it's the Taylor liquor license?
That was the one I was speaking of.
Mr. Mayor, that is a full retail license, and at the last license hearings, council asked that something be done during this, this next review period, which we are six months into at this point in time. And so, pursuant to whatever happens with that license, you'll get to review that potential deployment of that license again in February.
Okay.
And if, and you get to determine whether or not he's done what you've asked him to do within that period of time. Fleur, would you add anything otherwise to that?
The only thing I would add is that we heard that Wyoming Downs was trying to work with Mr. Taylor for that liquor license, but they did not reach an agreement, and so Wyoming Downs is now interested in that bar and grill license.
Thank you.
Anything else on it, that we could bring Amber back in?
That's what I should have done. Then we would have ended.
Then we all just leave up the story and hang on for it.
Okay, anything else on a agenda review?
No, sir, I have nothing else.
Okay, legislative review.
Mr. Mayor, we are into the process of looking at resolutions with WAM, and, you know, that part of the process is one that sets us up for our legislative season. Council has, its ideas already out there, and so, I, you know, I don't really have anything to add, other than it seems like the city of Casper does get a lot of support from WAM with regard to the legislative ideas that you all put forward. So, I want you to know that those are still in the mix, and we're still at the table with regard to proposing your agenda, if you will.
All right. Anybody else with legislative review stuff, agenda? All right, so we'll go council around the table. Let's go councilwoman named Britson.
Hi, I just have one thing, and it's about the international building codes. Is it possible to find out what municipalities in Wyoming that are currently using these? And then, and then also, if they have, like, any kind of problems, or what's, or any positives that may be coming through those also? You know, I was intending on going to WAM this week, but I got sick instead, so unfortunately, I won't be able to go and ask those questions. But I have been talking to people in the state to kind of see what the state is requiring versus what this international building codes are requiring as well. So, I was just curious if we had information with other municipalities. That's it.
Okay. Along the lines of that, basically, if the state adopts it, it's a done deal. All we're doing, I noticed the chief back there agreeing with me, is I ran into this with the electric code. If the state passes it, which they have, then every place in Wyoming is bound, is bound to follow that rule. And all we're really doing is just codifying that we are accepting that, but yet, we have no real say on it. Now, certain things are grandfathered in, like balustrade spacings. If you don't do over, is it 40% of renovation, you don't have to upgrade the plumbing and electric code, but the new part has to be. You go over 45% on a remodel of value, you have to upgrade everything to current standards. So, those are really the only things and ways you can get around having to follow by that UVC, or the IBC. And that's what I've been told by Mr. Elliston, and it looks like our fire chief is nodding his head in agreement as well, because I was griping about the electric code. All right. Councilman Nell.
I don't have anything, thank you.
All right, Councilman Gammron.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple things, real quick. Attended virtually the Climb Wyoming Annual Breakfast last Friday. Just wanted to thank their team for putting that together. Was a great job, lots of great information, and I appreciate all the work that organization does in our community and across the state. It's a really good one. Lemonade Day was last Saturday, seemed like it went really well, so, thanks. I believe that's a town square deal. Thank you for putting that on, getting young entrepreneurs out there. There was a Oil City News article last week updating people on progress so far in regards to the 311 app. This was published on July 8th. Stated that the city Casper crews repaired 211 citizen reported potholes, 43 streetlight outages, 34 damaged or missing signs, and responded to 892 of 908 total citizen requests. So, seems like that has been going really well. So, I guess another encouragement for people, if you see anything around town, potholes, streetlight outages, litter, whatever it may be, use that Casper 311 portal. It looks like, you know, it's working very well, and city crews are responsive to that. And then, last one is just an update for Casper Youth Council. They are currently accepting applications for students interested in serving. You can find that application on impactwyoming.org, or on their Youth Council Facebook page. Nautrona County's high school students, all of them are invited to apply. They have a couple of things coming up, including a quarterly student forum hosted at Kedavon NC with city, county, and state representatives that will launch in October. A Casper Civic Day will launch in October as well. That's for juniors and seniors to tour and visit with city staff and learn about future career opportunities in public service and administration. Expanding Casper Youth Council across the state, including Cheyenne and Laramie, as well as Gillette, Cody, Lander, Douglas, and Mills. So, obviously, you know, the aim is to make this a statewide initiative, and then also hosting a Wyoming Youth Council Conference August of '22. They also got a grant, $30,000 grant from the Daniels Fund for expanding Casper Youth Council across the state, for putting on an annual conference, and for operating. So, I guess thank you to the Daniels Fund, and excited to see where the Casper Youth Council initiative goes here and across the state. Thanks, that's all I got.
Councilman Gammron, that virtual breakfast, Councilman Johnson wanted to know how the food was. All right, Councilmember Paul.
He didn't find it funny.
There's a little grin there.
They sent you home with, like, so a virtual, so they send you coffee, like, they get, you know, you register, and you got coffee, like a coffee cup, something else. So, it was like, it was awesome, local, you know, coffee from Jackson roasted a couple days ago. It was awesome. So, I'm all about that local stuff, I dig it.
Councilmember Paul.
Just happy parade day, and great work, everybody who was involved in executing what I think was another very successful parade, and I was down kind of in the, in the middle of it, so I got to see lots of folks out for that. And rodeos, rodeo again, fair and rodeo, take some time to go, go check out an event, or, you know, see any of the exhibits that they have there. That's, that's it.
All right, Councilman Cathy. Nothing this week. Next week, I've got Water Board and Chamber of Commerce meeting, both on Tuesday of next week. So, if either of you have anything that we need brought up, well, you'll be at the Water Board meeting, but if there's anything we need to bring up at either one of those, make sure you let me know. All right, Councilman Johnson.
Nothing tonight.
Vice Mayor Pacheco.
Nothing. I have LGBTQ meeting on Friday, three, so I'll be there for that. I think they're going to talk more about safe, and so, be there for those, that meeting. And then, Mayor and I rode on the fire engine today for the parade at Carter, it was super fun, and we had a good time, saw lots of people. There were a lot about, sure, the mayor will talk a little more about that, so I won't steal his thunder.
You could have stolen, but anyways, there were a lot of people out, and what a great turnout today. I think that, last I heard, there was a thousand runners at the Casper Chase this morning. I believe that number's correct, but that's a lot. But ton of people out, great turnout for the parade, so I appreciate that. And the other thing I want to bring up is, I got to tell you, last night, I just kind of want to remind everybody that the city has recreational leagues, and I emphasize the word recreational, because we go to have fun. And literally, last night, I went to a softball game that we had at 9:30, but I was finishing watching the 8:20 game, when one player tagged another player. The other players thought they were tagged a little bit hard, so the two of them had words with each other, at which time the pitcher, who was an umpire, came over to break it up and told them to go their separate directions, and literally, one guy punched the other in the face and took him to the ground and started choking him out. So, if you're going to be involved in recreational sports, they are recreational sports, and we do them to have fun, not to go out there and fight. And I'm sure that there are professional boxing leagues, and if you want to go fight with somebody, you can certainly go do that. But I'm taking this moment, just to give you my commentary, that softball fields are not a place for assaulting each other, shouldn't be, should never be, so I put that out there, that it just completely made me speechless last night, just as I am tonight. So, anyways, just as a reminder, that there's no place for violence on, on any of our fields, and please don't take it out on one another, and, yep. That's on the hockey rink. Yeah, hockey rink, boxing rink, they all have rink after their name, not field, so recreational. And I did want to mention to you guys that I was sorry I missed the fire truck today, but with my arm restrictions, I didn't feel it was wise for me to try to climb up on there, particularly in case we had to get off in a hurry. It's all right, because Ray was getting everybody wet anyways, because... Oh, well, good. ...doesn't quite understand how to swerve.
It was defaulty equipment.
Whoa. Okay, that's all I have, so, meetings are adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, have a good night.
Thanks, everybody.